But I do want to simply say that he served on this commission and he did an outstanding job, brought a really great perspective to a lot of conversations. And I, for one, am very sorry to not see him walk through the door today. And I'm gonna miss him. And if no one objects, I'd like to just take a moment of silence before we get rolling.
All right. So, moving on from the somber notes, the purpose of the organizational meeting is to elect officers, set the day and time of all regular monthly meetings, and to address any other items of procedure. The very first thing we need to do is call for nominations of the chairperson.
Do we need to roll first?
Ah, thank you. Yes, quality attendance to roll. So Marzullo, present, Fisher.
Here.
Spellman.
Here.
Crew.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
And please let the record reflect, we have trustees Augustine, Sweetick, and Asherall in the, attending virtually, as well as alternate Rubel. Yeah, I, we might have to just admit, I don't know if she's an alternate or not at this point. So, the next step is calling for nominations for chairperson. Any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Fisher for chair.
I'd like to second that, but I'd also like to make a comment. As most of the members are aware, there is a potential conflict because of a relationship between our chairman and one of the trustees. And I'm seconding this, agreeing with this, to remove any potential for perceived conflict of interest at this time in our township. There's a lot of loose lips and lies and things going around. In no way do I mean to suggest that the current chairman has not done a very good job. I just think these being placed in a potential conflicting situation, and I think by changing chairman, at least for the year 2022, would be beneficial to the board's integrity. Thank you.
So, I guess I'll accept the nomination, but I would also like to at least have a conversation and nominate Chairman Marzullo as another option for us. You know, I think that Chairman Marzullo has brought a wealth of history to this board that I think is important, that, you know, I've been here for three years now, one year as an alternate and one year as a full voting member. I've tried to be very involved with what's happened, but I still have a lot to learn. And so, I think that, you know, this board needs to have a conversation about moving forward, you know, how much of a role does the president have in, you know, having an understanding historically of what's happened, and if that's an important part of what the president's role should be. So, I would like to, you know, nominate Matt, not wait, accept the nomination and go from there.
There would have to be a second before we move forward with that, so.
Can I ask Dave to elaborate on how he feels the conflict of interest?
Please.
Certainly. It's most likely that one of the trustees, our chairman's sister, is requesting to be the liaison between the board and between the trustees. And is there a conflict? I don't want any appearance of a conflict. And there is the appearance of, would there be a conflict? Based on what I know of Matt, I wouldn't think so, but I don't, I think the appearance has to be removed to maintain the integrity of this board. There's rumors flying around in the past over different issues that the board has been in the pocket of this trustee or in the pocket of that developer and all that sort of thing, and just to try to keep our integrity up there, I think it's in the best interest at this time to make this change, be it permanent or temporary. Personally, I think temporary is fine, so there's other issues resolved. I was hoping it would be resolved by this evening, and it has not been.
To add to that, so in years past, I've attended a lot of training on Ohio sunshine laws, just other various trainings zoning matter related, and over those being in terms of the appearance of conflict of interest. This nomination, Matt, is in no, I mean, means a ding on your character. I don't think this would be an actual issue. However, my past training has taught me that if, if there is so much of the appearance, eliminate that conflict, that appearance of conflict of interest, and take that off of, in this particular case, the zoning commissions, and take that weight off their shoulders. And so I would second what Mr. Manley has stated.
So if there's no second for my nomination, then would anyone else be interested in being zoning chair?
Don't let me get me, Matt.
Oh, I'm.
No, I'm not, I'm not interested. Matt, I thought you've done an outstanding job last year.
Thank you.
And I, you know, brought a different viewpoint and composition here to the board. Obviously, I don't know what's going on because I didn't know all of what has been said, but if there is an appearance of a conflict of interest, then I agree with it should not, we should not be part of it. I just didn't see it. I didn't see it.
I am a little bit curious, Mr. Manley, is you, you said that there have been lies flooding, flying through the township. Are any of them pertaining to myself? And I'd be curious what they might be.
No, what I'm talking, what I was talking about, we've been, this board, since I've been on the board on several, through this, things, discussing the different board members maybe in collusion with somebody, and, I mean, the crap that goes on, and I just, I just don't want any more. I mean, we gotta eliminate that.
I could certainly see where there might be a perception of collusion going on.
Okay, that's, I'll use the perception, if you will, and that's, that's my whole position.
Yeah, sometimes it comes up pretty clearly.
It's just, I just don't think it's right at this time, for the long term.
Well, then, if there are no other nominations, then we'll call for a vote in favor.
Can I ask one more question?
Certainly.
Regarding the legitimacy here? Because now you guys all got me thinking. With Bruce leaving, why wasn't his position filled with the alternate that we had onboard? Is that?
So, I mean, this was all stuff that I was gonna get into in the chair's report. I know there's.
And I, but I'm asking because Bill made the nomination, so I'm just wanting to put it all out there, okay? Because obviously.
So ultimately, there's nothing in statute requiring an alternate to fill that position. It is not a requirement.
What has past practice been done, though?
Past practice has been the alternate fills the role.
That's what I thought. So why did we change it this time?
That's a question for the trustees. I think I'll have to ask them.
No offense, Bill.
No, hey.
I am, like I said, I feel like a lost duck here because I don't know half of what some people are saying here. But, yeah.
So.
No, I'm just, I'm just, you know, with the procedures taking place today, it's pretty important.
Which is also why they wanted to make sure that the two vacant seats were filled so that there was more than simply a quora, so that there could be two or three people, or two additional people involved in the discussion.
So when, when the, whomever Dave replaced, was that?
Dave's, Dave's term expired.
Right.
And was reappointed.
Okay.
Bruce's term, he came vacant after his, after his passing. And they acted very quickly to fill that role.
So, my, my understanding.
Any questions to move forward on this one?
Not for this. This is, you know, part of this is, I, I guess, you know, without the trustees here, it's going to be somewhat difficult to fully flesh out. My understanding is that Bruce's vacancy became effective when he passed, and so the prior trustees, as of last year, were able to fill that role because that role was open in 2021. The other vacancies didn't come into place until this year because the vacancies terminated, the vacancies opened up at the end of 2021 because those terms just ended at the end of 2021. So the new trustees have to fill three positions. They have to fill Dave Manley's position, and they have to fill the two alternate positions. My understanding is that the trustees, there were two of them available, they voted to seat Dave Manley to continue his role, so that gives us the full board, but they weren't going to seat any alternates until they had a full trustee presence. So that's why the two alternates are not.
Now, what, what I will say with that is, there were two trustees that filled one role. Three trustees filled Bruce's vacancy.
The three, four, three trustees.
Three former.
As of last year.
Correct. Filled, filled Bruce's role. Two trustees filled, filled Dave's role.
Correct.
Reappointed.
Reappointed, certainly. But did nothing on the alternate.
Correct. That's my understanding. Yeah. So that's why we do not have actually any alternates tonight, because I think, you know, I think Lindsey's been recommended as an alternate, and then I also think Mr. Schrader, who's in the audience, has also been recommended as an alternate, but neither one of them have been voted on.
So we don't have an alternate, okay?
Officially.
Officially, at this point.
And for what it's worth, I can give you, after the meeting, at least three occasions where alternates were not appointed or somebody was, they went around somebody. Those, two of them on the Board of Zoning Appeals when I was chair. So it's, they generally follow that, but they have, this is not a change in the sense that it never happened before.
Correct. Same, it was the same on the zoning commission in 11.
I was thinking the other one.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that for me. I guess I was the only one who wasn't in the know here.
So.
Chairman Marzullo, a few.
Yeah. So, so, so in addition to the words that Mr. Manley spoke, right, I agree with that. While I was on the commission in my previous, previous life, previous tenure here, one of the things that I wanted to push for, and I tried year after year after year, is to get various members of the commission rotating through the various leadership spots. Now, you've been in this position, this is another, I just wanted to say for the record, another one of the reasons why I'm making the nomination for Mr. Fisher here, is I would like to just see a rotation. That role is a very important role, you know that, I know that, Mr. Manley knows that from time when he was chair on various commissions. I think it's not just important, but it's a good role for the other folks on the commission to have the opportunity to sit in, to get a different perspective. It humbles you, it gives you quite a different perspective on what it means to be on this commission, okay? And so that's one of the reasons, the other reasons that I'm making my nomination for Mr. Fisher. To Mr. Fisher, I will say this, it's, it's, it's a step up, and you may be a little bit nervous about it, you may see the pains, for instance, that somebody like Chairman Marzullo has gone through, but I will say this, that there are members on this commission with the experience who are here to help and to guide you along the way. Chairman Marzullo being one of those, myself, Mr. Manley being another one of those. So it's, you know, kind of your decision at this point to accept, and we can move forward. I don't want to blindside you with this, but, you know, certainly, from my previous tenure here, I have some thoughts and ideas, how I like to see things go, and that's why I'm kind of quick to make my nomination there, so. Thank you.
One, one thing not mentioned was the tremendous addition of time required as the chairman replaces not. So, do you accept the nomination?
Yeah, I accept the nomination.
Okay, great. No other nominations, so we'll go through and vote. Marzullo, yes. Fisher?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
And Manley?
Yes.
All right, great, it passes unanimously. Now, as new chairperson, you get to run the remainder of the meeting.
Thanks.
I start with calling for nominations for vice chair.
So I'll accept nominations for vice chair.
Well, Bill, would you be interested in being vice chair?
Actually, I would.
That leaves you.
Mrs. Crew.
You want to get in the loop?
Oh, yes, I do want to get in the loop.
I nominate Michelle.
It's like, well, I don't know, I didn't know about this loop, but.
Maybe, you're in now. Maybe.
Okay, I accept.
Great.
Any other nominations? All right, if there are no other nominations, we'll call for a roll. Marzullo?
Yes.
Fisher, yes. Spellman?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
You sounded as enthusiastic.
I was thinking about it.
All meetings will be open to the general public, advertised per the requirements to the Ohio Revised Code. Any interested party may request a notice of any regular or special meeting of the zoning commission by sending such request to the zoning clerk and including a self-addressed stamped envelope. There's a, I think that there needs to be an amendment here that Suzanne pointed to, pointed out to us. The, the person also has the option to provide an email address and request notification through email distribution. I'd like to make the following motions, or move for motion. The regular monthly meeting will be the first Thursday of the month. The regular meeting will be called to order at 7:00 PM. I'll do a roll call. Fisher, yes. Marzullo?
You have to make the motion.
Oh, sorry, I'll make the motion. Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry.
Still progress.
I got you. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call for, roll call. Fisher, yes. Marzullo?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Work sessions will be scheduled as needed and advertised per the requirements of the Ohio Revised Code. Work sessions will be called to order at 7:00 PM. Entertained a motion?
I, I think we need, a couple times we've moved it to 6:30, so I, shouldn't we modify that to say at the time, at the time appointed or something of that nature? Because we've had work sessions at 6:30, and did we have one at 6:00, I think?
It really depends on whether or not we had it on a separate date. If it was a work session that was.
Okay, so if we move the meeting date down, okay, I got you.
We.
If it's a separate date, then.
Yeah, and we can always.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you can, you can alter this to say work sessions will be called to order at 7:00 PM, unless, otherwise moved by the commission. Something like that.
Do we want to amend it?
No, that's fine, if you can change, if you could change the times on a regular meeting night to make it beforehand, and you don't see any issue to it, then I, why clutter this up with more words?
So I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Whoever. Do a roll call. Fisher, yes. Marzullo?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Public hearings will be scheduled as needed and advertised per the requirements to the Ohio Revised Code. Kind of a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Fisher, yes. Marzullo?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher, this is education from the past. If you want to say, who made the second motion in a quarter minute, so.
Okay.
This crew made the second, second intermotion, just say it aloud.
Perfect. Thank you.
I didn't know Burns was here.
Procedures for the various meeting business matters set by motion of the new chairperson, the chairperson moves to adopt the following procedures. All zoning commission meetings will be electronically recorded for transcription purposes only. To have minutes of the monthly meetings and any other meeting minutes mailed or electronically mailed to all members of the commission so as to be received at least one week prior to the regular monthly, excuse me, prior to the next regular monthly meeting. Motion.
How often have we received the minutes a week before?
Never.
Why are we putting that in there? I mean, I, that's, I kept looking for that when I read that when I first started, like, where are they?
Generally speaking, we get them the day before.
Day before.
Be nice to keep it this way, though, because I would leave it this way. I don't like reading them in the morning hours.
I don't either. Be nice to have them at least two days before.
Do we just want to change that so as to attempt to be received, or we can just even just say so as to be received prior to, if we just wanted to simplify the language?
Do we know why we're receiving them late?
I think it's a combination of things. I think, you know, the manpower that we have to, right, to create the minutes is a, is a big challenge.
Is it unreasonable to ask for them more than one day in advance? This, I'm harping on this one a little, just because this is an issue from a while ago.
I, I think we, I think we shouldn't ask, I really do. A day in advance is kind of late, like yesterday at 4 o'clock, I'm done looking at the computer, you know? And then I work all day, so, like, I rushed to look at it after work today to get, you know, is there a way we can ask?
So, what you'll, what you'll see is, as vice chair now, is generally speaking, you get them a couple hours before they go out for your review, to get them back to Suzanne, to then get them sent out. So you're only, you're only getting them a couple hours ahead of time to review them, to then get them sent out to the board, so.
Is it unreasonable to change it to a couple days? Maybe a week is too much, but certainly in practice, a day.
Does, does reducing it increase the likelihood of it coming earlier?
That goes back to the request of, why get it, you know, as late as we do?
Yeah.
I, I think we can certainly try to have a conversation and see if.
Why don't we leave it like it is, and then just try to have a conversation with her, and if we have to modify it to four days or whatever, you can always come back and amend this.
Right.
I'm good with that. I would like to have a, I mean, I think we should pursue the conversation.
So I'll entertain a motion to leave it as is and.
So moved.
Crew, man, Crew, motion. Spellman, second it.
Hi, Dave Manley.
Did Dave speak to it? Spellman had already seconded it, thank you.
Okay, I withdraw my second.
Fisher, yes?
Yes.
Marzullo, yes. Spellman?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
All new business matters, other than amendment proposals, to be considered at a regular monthly meeting are to be received by the zoning office no later than the 10th of the previous month. For an amendment proposal, the applicant should just request to be placed on the agenda. For site plan reviews pursuant to Chapter 11, the plan must first be reviewed by the zoning inspector and certified for meeting all submission requirements, and then submitted to the zoning commission no later than the 10th of the previous month. For amendment proposals, the applicant at a regular meeting must submit file amendments in person. This is because of various time limits. Kind of a motion.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Manley, seconded by Marzullo. I'll do a roll call. Fisher, yes. Marzullo?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Zoning commission members with expiring terms need to notify the board of trustees in writing, email is acceptable, of their interest to serve as a zoning board member by November 15th. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Crew.
Second.
Seconded by Marzullo. Roll. Fisher, yes. Marzullo?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
The participation of a zoning commission member who is designated to represent the zoning commission board will be by request, will be by request of the zoning board chairman and the approval by the trustee liaison on an as-needed basis. This will be based on purpose, subject matter, and availability. Go ahead.
May I ask a question? I, I don't recognize this one from years past, and there's just something not making sense about this. Does anybody have context what this is, what this means?
Yeah, the best example I can give you is right now, is we have the comprehensive plan coming up, and I'm going to be representing the zoning board, and I'm stunned for this. There may be more coming, but.
Okay.
That's an immediate example. And we will have a discussion in some future time of what, I mean, maybe at the end of this meeting, if we have time, of what the zoning board thinks to keep an eye out for and so on.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Spellman.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Crew. Roll. Fisher, yes. Marzullo?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Appoint a member to attend the Medina County Planning Commission meetings when required by a filing from Hinkley. I'll take a call for nominations or a volunteer. Historically, this, I think, at least since I've been here, has been done by the chair. I'm open to doing it. If there's someone else, if you want to continue that, I'm fine with that. You know, I'm, I don't have to be that person if someone else wants to, enjoys doing the planning commission meetings.
I think this is fine the way it's written. You mean, you can, you can appoint yourself, right?
Yeah.
So.
Or volunteer.
Volunteer yourself. Are you asking us about the language, or who do you want us to represent?
This is generally a call for nominations, so we're.
Call for nominations.
I move to nominate Chair Fisher.
Second.
You don't want to do it?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I'll take a. They don't have to call a motion, I guess, they just have to do the roll call, right? All right, we'll do roll. Fisher, yes. Marzullo?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Public records policies. Establish a Hinkley Township zoning commission email address for each member and alternate, i.e. bkman.h tzc@providerofchoice. So it's.
First, first initial, last.
Last name, at whatever. I think we all have one. Do you already have one established?
Yep, Suzanne, I think you used it in the communication of the minutes, so it should be on there.
I'll entertain a motion.
Moved.
So moved by Man, excuse me, moved by Marzullo, seconded by Spellman. Roll. Fisher, yes. Marzullo?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Procedures under Chapter 11 allowing the zoning commission to hire a third-party consultant. A third-party consultant will be utilized as needed. For example, site. For example, site plan reviews or when deemed necessary by the Hinckley Township Zoning Commission Chair or by a majority vote of the Hinckley Township Zoning Commission. The chairman will work with the trustee liaison to identify and engage prospective consultants and the duties of the consultant may include, but will not be limited to the following: Review of a preliminary and/or final site plan for compliance with the Hinckley Township Zoning Code. Attendance at any pre, preliminary and/or final site plan review or reviews. Attendance at any preliminary or final site plan review. Recommendations of improvements to the plan to better serve our code and comprehensive plan. Review of preliminary and/or final site plan for compliance with the Hinckley Township Zoning Code. If there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Crew.
Second.
Seconded by Marzullo. Call roll. Fisher, yes. Marzullo?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Length of the regular meetings. So chairperson. I'll move for the following procedures. Meetings, regular work session or public hearings or any combination of those in a given day will be capped at two hours of duration. The Hinckley Township Zoning Commission can choose at any time by motion to extend the meeting by duration set within that motion and/or the meeting items on the agenda will be rolled over to the next monthly meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Crew.
Second.
Seconded by Manley. Do a roll. Fisher, yes. Marzullo?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Need for community exposure for all members of the zoning commission, voting and alternates. It is strongly recommended that each member of the zoning commission attend one Medina County Planning Commission meeting during the year. Think that that can be done virtually currently still correct.
I don't know if the planning commission is.
They can't do it.
All right, so.
I did attend one virtual, I believe, but I don't know as a presence and to speak, you can't.
You can't.
But I know I did attend one last year. I don't know if they continued it.
If I may speak, that might have been because of the pandemic.
Correct. That's what I said. I don't know. Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I was around when this particular procedure was added. Um, interesting for the board context, the idea behind this was again, education of the commission and get them exposure to the various entities that, that we partner with, uh, the Medina County Planning Commission being one of those. Um, we may also want to consider having each member sit in on at least one BZA, uh, meeting a year just to further our education so, uh, you know, we can see insights into how the other entities, uh, that we partner with work.
So are you suggesting an amendment or?
I'm not suggesting an amendment. I'm throwing the idea out there. Just wanted to give a little context as to, uh, where this particular number 11 originated from, uh, and the intent behind it. But leave it up to the commission here to say whether this is of value or not.
I think it's of value. It's, it's, I mean, it's good to attend. I try to attend. I've attended a lot of things virtually, um, having a person to. Dave?
I've been to the meetings, so not this past year, but prior to that, I've been to probably a dozen of them over the years.
So moved.
Moving as is or moving with amendment?
As is.
Yeah, leave it as is.
Okay. Moved by Crew.
A second.
Seconded by Spellman. I'll take roll. Fisher, yes. Marzullo?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Do call for any additional procedures or additional business?
So I have one item and it's more of a question, I think, to start with. Uh, I left this commission three or four years, um, back and, uh, the world has changed in the last three or four years. Uh, when I sat in this chair last, uh, certainly the TVs and the cameras weren't around. Um, but at the time that I served, uh, and it was, uh, for, I think, just short of 11 years, um, through training, through education from the prosecutor and other entities, discussions with trustees, uh, et cetera, um, we were always educated that the zoning commission meetings and by right of, uh, and by law of Ohio sunshine law are publicly accessible. The public is welcome to sit in on those sessions, uh, on those meetings. Um, but, but it is in a, it's in a listen only type fashion. Uh, and I don't know if over the last couple of years anything's changed with that, but in the past it was, um, you know, there was no public participation unless, uh, the chair, uh, gave them that opportunity at the end of the meeting. And I think we've, Mr. Marzullo probably persisted that if, if I'm, uh, correct. Um, so, you know, I, as I was reading through minutes over the last, uh, couple of years here, uh, I saw a couple of instances where we had public participation in the midst of the meeting. Um, now, having not been there, I, you know, have absolutely no context, but I look at these minutes and in some ways it, it seemed like it was valuable input, uh, into discussion. In other ways, it seemed disruptive, uh, to the flow of the, uh, the board there. Um, the reason I bring this up is it, unless law has changed, that is still, uh, the way in which it, it stands is that, uh, these commission meetings are open to the public to listen in. Uh, it is up to us, uh, if we want to give them an opportunity to speak. And I will say as a, the time that I served as chair, uh, most certainly valued the inputs from the public, uh, but did hold that until the end of a meeting. Um, now, again, going through the minutes, it looked like it was sprinkled in there. Uh, I would recommend a motion in here that we absolutely, uh, give the public, uh, an active, uh, you know, time to participate in these meetings to weigh in, certainly in the process of, uh, uh, you know, text amendments, things of that. You have public hearings in which the public's, um, uh, voice is absolutely, uh, you know, provided, uh, an opportunity to provide it. Um, but I, I'd move to, uh, add a, add an amendment to this or, or add a procedure, uh, that outright calls that, uh, you know, uh, a period of time at the end of each meeting will be dedicated, uh, at the end of each meeting for participation, uh, by the public for, uh, comment, feedback, et cetera, and, and hold that until the end of the meeting, not, uh.
Personally, I, I'd challenge that.
Okay.
Um, I, I disagree. Um, I think that it's important that we have, before we move on to a second, second, separate topic, that we can actually get public opinion before we get to the point where, all right, in our minds, it's settled, this is what we're going to do. Then at the end, we open it back up, someone makes valid points, and then we have to come back and reopen what we thought was settled and then continue that. I mean, ultimately, I think it'll lead to more continuance and longer meetings, frankly. Because ultimately, I mean, a, a great example is when we were talking about, um, the, the screening of solar panels where had we not had the input as we were going through it, we would have said, all right, this is what we're going to do. Get to our nine o'clock, all right, we're about to shut it down. Let's ask what the public wants. Public says that doesn't make sense because of this, 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 and this. And then we say, wow, that's a really good point. What are we going to do about this? Now we have to address it again. Instead, it allowed us the opportunity to table things that we didn't have a chance to get to, but we're moving forward on the, on the issues that we've actually touched on. So I think it's, it's of tremendous value to allow them to speak throughout the course of the meeting on the topics that specifically pertain to their interest.
But, Mr. Chairman, but at the same time, should this become a, an amendment, whatever, there is a, there is a public hearing at which time every word could be discussed. So it's not like the public is cut out of their suggestions or their thoughts. There, there is a second time around. I, I find it very disruptive. I find it very disruptive. People just jump up and talk and it's been going on, not just from, by yourself, but previous. Uh, I would like to go back to what we used to do.
Correct.
And we certainly still do at the BZA, I believe. And that is we allow time at the, at the end, no matter what we are doing, we try and leave some time to let the general public make their comments.
So I think it's absolutely important to get the feedback, uh, to allow that discussion. Uh, I bring this up. I, I personally, uh, you know, again, instead of, I'm going through minutes, I'm catching up on, you know, some, uh, old times here, uh, just found it to be, uh, what I felt to be is disruptive. There's nothing that this commission has ever done, at least in the time that I sat on it, uh, that came through the commission, uh, and at the end of it in one meeting. There's always been multiple, uh, sessions, multiple conversations. Um, certainly allowing time at the end of the meeting has to not disrupt, uh, us, uh, I think is sufficient. Uh, the public has the ability to send communication, uh, formal, informal, uh, directly to the chair, through the, through the township, uh, through the zoning administrator. Um, I think there's ample opportunity out there as, uh, Mr. Manley mentioned, uh, you have, uh, you know, you have your public hearings as well where we have that. Um, that is my opinion. Uh, like, we come from a little bit of a different, you know, background here. Um, I'm just looking, you know, again, going through, uh, I see a lot of, uh, sessions in the past, uh, year here, uh, I've been dragged out, what I feel I've been dragged out. Um, you know, it, it's, it's one thing, uh, you know, if the public is participating with a 30-second comment, it's perhaps another thing if it's a, a fire or a 10-minute, uh, tangent on things, so.
So I, I think I agree with Marzullo in the fact that I think we've gotten some very valuable pointed comments throughout the meeting, particularly only have a series of topics that we're covering and, you know, 350 Hinckley has some input on a, a very small aspect of the topic, but it helps us to re-guide the direction of the conversation that we're having at that point, um, to, to more quickly focus on what we need to focus on. I think that we had some, some good comments come out of the, um, out of the, um, short-term rentals as well. And so I, I wonder if we can kind of work with that and, and one, make sure that we are noting that we do have a period of time reserved at the end, but also if we can provide some, um, some ability to have some flexibility, particularly on those instances where we have several topics that we're discussing and maybe at that point it makes sense to provide some comments throughout that, that session. And so what I recommend is continuing on with what, uh, Mr. Spellman said, a period of time at the end of the meeting will be reserved for public comment, uh, unless otherwise recognized by the chair. And that way the chair has some discretion to provide public comments earlier in the meeting as they might see fit based upon how the conversation's going, what topics are being discussed that day.
Frankly, I think that's always been the case. It's been discretion of the chair.
Correct.
Um, if someone has a comment that's worth, that, that you want to talk about, then you can acknowledge them, like you approach the podium and we can deal with it.
Right.
Um, I think before moving on, especially when it's a hotly debated topic, um, it's, disingenuous to say, okay, well, we're going to hold all public comment until the end, knowing that a lot of people are here for one topic and they don't want to stick around two hours to talk about the versus the A or this, that, or the other. And I, I mean, honestly, I think it seems very disingenuous, like we're saying, all right, we actually want to limit the amount of public interaction that we can.
It's not a limit, uh, just to, to comment on that. It's not, uh, looking for limitation. It's, it's, uh, keeping a, a procedure, uh, of this commission. And as I noted, uh, I do not believe, um, based on law, uh, that the public, uh, is even, uh, provided that ability, uh, or that we have to put, provide the public that ability. Uh, but what I am advocating.
Oh, you don't have to.
You. By law, you don't have to.
That's what I'm saying. You don't have to, but it's the proper thing.
It is absolutely the proper thing and, and, uh, you know, if Chair Fisher, uh, would move on the comment there, I would absolutely, uh, second that. I think it's absolutely up to, to Chair's discretion and, like you said, uh, you did that, you know, in the past, I did that in the past. Um, but let's make it a, I'll call for it, let's make that a, a formal procedure, uh, that can't be challenged. There it is. It's, it's, you know, in our organizational notes, it's a procedure. We, uh, granted ourselves, you know, that ability to, uh, at discretion, take, take feedback from the public during the meeting as well as then to reserve time, uh, at the end of it for the public feedback as well.
I have no further comments here.
I'm, I'm fine with, um, Marcus's suggested text because I too feel that there are times where the public's comments weren't listening to because it may upset everything we've previously discussed or, you know, moving forward. So I'm, Marcus, I'm, I like the text you've written.
Any other comments? No? So I'll just read it back one more time for the record and then we can make a motion. A period of time at the end of the meeting will, will be reserved for public comment unless recognized by the chair. Unless, let, let me say unless otherwise recognized by the chair. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Crew.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Spellman. Do a roll call. Marzullo?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Anything else? Great. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting. 7:48.
So moved.
And a second.
Moved by Marzullo. Seconded by Crew. I'll take roll. Fisher, yes. Marzullo?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Crew? Manley?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess and then return at, uh, we'll call it 7:55, so it will be six minutes. Jen, can you hear us again?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. All right, I'll call the regular meeting of January 6th to order. It's 7:55 on January 6th. I believe that we need to start with another roll, so I will go ahead and call Roll. Fisher here. Crew?
Here.
Marzullo?
Here.
Spellman?
Here.
Manley?
Here.
Perfect. We'll start with the regular meeting minutes from December 2nd, 2021. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Are there any suggested amendments to the minutes?
You usually do your good spell check, so I usually wait for you to see if you have anything. However, I did, there's one on page 5 of 9. Chair Manley. It's one. Should it be Mr. Manley?
I didn't see that. Yep.
Then on-
Let me make sure that, yeah, this is Mr. Pearl.
Yeah. Then I believe they mentioned Mr. Pearl, and they spelled his name wrong. Is that correct? On page 8 of 9. And Mr. Pearl. I wasn't sure if Mr. Pearl's emails was part of that or what.
You're reading the sentence, Chairman Marzullo read emails between himself and Mr. Pearl regarding- regarding Mr. Pearl's request?
Of the emails. I don't, I didn't remember, but if he did, his name spelled wrong. That's all. I think his name is P E R L. Correct?
Like the gem.
Oh, like the gem? P E A R. Oh, it is correct. Okay. My bad. That is correct.
So it looks like we only have one amendment, and that is changing Chair Manley to Mr. Manley. So if there are no other amendments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 2nd meeting as amended. So moved.
So I can-
Moved by Manley. Seconded by Marzullo. Do a Roll. Fisher, yes.
Crew, yes.
Crew, yes. Marzullo?
Yes.
Spellman?
Epstein.
Thank you. Manley?
Yes.
Sign moves and pass them out. All right, so the next order of business is our old business, and I think we had been talking about the topic of short-term rentals. And at our last meeting, we had discussed a definition for short-term rentals. So backing up a little bit, in the last discussion, we had, we discussed, first of all, identifying definitions for what a short-term rental is. And then we bifurcated short-term rentals into owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied. And owner-occupied being basically bed and breakfast. The non-owner-occupied being more commonly what you see on Airbnb and VRBO. We then discussed the possibility, at least on the framework, of allowing short-term non-owner-occupied rentals in the, as a conditional use within the residential district. And allowing, we hadn't got to whether it would be a permitted use or a conditional use, owner-occupied in the business district. Since then, I've had a few thoughts on this, and, you know, I think I'll share those first, and then I would love to hear your input as well on that framework that we worked on last time. You know, when I think about short-term rentals, one of the things that I always focus on is what's going to happen to the 20 to 30-acre parcels of property within Hinckley? You know, those parcels are very valuable. And if there's no income coming into those parcels, they're going to be sold off into developments. And so one of the things that I think we need to be mindful of is if we don't allow a use within the residential district that allows someone to generate income, does that then necessitate that owner moving it to a development? And so is what we're doing ultimately going to result in moving us further towards encouraging developments? And is that something that we want to do or not want to do? And so with that said, you know, I'm wondering if the framework of putting bed and breakfasts, the owner-occupied or short-term housing in the business district makes sense? Or would most residents prefer to have, you know, a bed and breakfast next to them on a 20-acre parcel of land instead of having that 20-acre parcel of land subdivided into multiple 2-acre parcels of land? And I think that that's something that we should weigh when we look at whether we really want owner-occupied structures. Go ahead.
Marcus, can I make a comment? You know, we're getting ready to begin this audit and the comprehensive plan, and I'm wondering if this whole thing with rentals, short-term, long-term, multi, so on and so forth, shouldn't be set aside and we attack, for example, the alternative energy regarding screening and some other issues and whatever else comes up to this? Because zoning typically reacts. I appreciate this board, at least over the last year, has been more aggressive in trying to anticipate. But this is not an issue that we know of. And I'm just wondering if we're getting way too ahead of our skis here, that maybe we should be slowing down and set this aside until after the comprehensive plan begins to formulate, at the very least, if it's not finished, and to spend our energy on other items.
So I think one of the things that came out in the last meeting that kind of addresses both of these is that it's not necessarily right now that we're trying to limit or expand capabilities so much as it is defining it. If we just put the definition in the book, that is, that is really what we need to be focusing on. How do we define what these things are? Because first off, we already have approval or conditional approvals for group homes, family homes. We need to define those things. Otherwise, anyone that comes in and says, ah, I'm a group home, they're going to get approved. We need to know as a commission, what is a group home? And what we really latched on to in the last couple of months was short-term rental. But that was because last month or two months ago, we were still wrestling with short-term rental and group homes. And we said, all right, let's separate the two, and we're going to go with short-term rentals right now, and then we're going to go on to group homes. The reality is, we're not trying, or certainly when I was running it, I was not trying to put any sort of limitation on it so much as let people know, all right, this is how it's defined, so that we can react swiftly rather than, well, shoot, now we have to debate for the next three months as to what is a short-term rental before we can even figure out what we want to do with it.
I appreciate that insight. As I read through, you know, minutes from 2021, certainly this came up several months back. I wasn't quite sure if we're trying to solve a problem that exists today or account for a problem or an issue that we foresaw in the future. But just by starting with a definition seems a reasonable place to start. Where we take it from there, I think, is debatable, but, you know, at least the definition would be, I think, high goal.
And so my understanding is that the goal now, based upon the trustee meetings in December, they're hoping to have some resolution to the comprehensive plan. I think the timeline by the company is end of April, maybe. So, you know, one of the things that we could consider doing is starting to gear up and have some definitions, and then we can somewhat table those until after the results of the comprehensive plan come back. And then we'll be able to move relatively quickly because we work on a definition, and we've worked on these items for so long that if we table something completely at this point, we're going to be restarting again when the comprehensive plan comes through. So if at least we've gotten some definitions worked out, then we're not so flat-footed when the planning commission, you know, the new comprehensive plan or the updates come through, and we're able to move forward. And my hope would be we can take a series of items and push them through the public hearing all at once to save the township some money, very similar to what we did last year.
And simultaneously, what to build on that is that the definitions that we come up with, that we finalize, won't be pushed through until after the comprehensive audit is completed.
Well, that's-
So we can finalize definitions, and then they're written down. We've spent the sweat equity with it. And then if there are subtle changes that need to be made, it's not for naught. Right?
All right, so let's, what are the words we want to define? Group home? Short-term rentals? Long-term rentals? What, can we get a list of the words if we want? Pardon me, or the phrases we need to come up with definitions of over the next meeting or two or three?
I think we already identified them. I mean, they're on the agenda. We've identified them in several meetings. The short-term rentals, group homes-
I've talked about.
Multi-unit homes.
Okay.
I mean, and the multi-unit buildings and the group homes, I believe, you know, came about in the last couple of months.
The group home, which I'm reading, about seven lines, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, seven lines long in front of me that was distributed. Is that the beginning of the talking point? Or is that getting close to the end of the definition of a group home? If anybody can answer that?
I believe that was kind of the beginning.
Beginning, okay.
Where are you reading, Mr. Manley?
What was given, was emailed to me, I can't tell you when, but either prior to the last meeting or the meeting before that. It says, "Any structure, building, residence, or place operated by a person or entity other than the residents of the structure, building, residence, or place in which three to 10 unrelated persons reside," and so on and so forth. So I've read the whole thing. You should have, everybody should have a copy of it.
I think that that was one of the, that was not our working definition, if I recall.
No.
No. It was a jumping off. Right. Actually, I believe, Ms. Ruble, you might have provided that.
I think that the only working definition that we've had thus far is bold on the December 2nd meetings, and that's for short-term December 2nd meetings.
And that was, that was your verbiage that we were working on.
Which was basically pulled from Peninsula.
Peninsula, yeah.
Okay. Let's see if I have December.
See, I have to have all my stuff here on the camera. I think on that chart, I had group homes too. I don't know what I do with my chart.
Okay, now, December. It's not on the agenda, so it must be in the minutes.
On December 2nd.
Minutes.
Page 6.
Page 6.
And-
But it's, but it's the minutes, right?
Correct.
Okay, I was looking for the agenda.
And so I'll read the definition that we had proposed. Again, this is just the working definition so far, and this was when we had bifurcated owner-occupied to non-owner-occupied. So this was our definition for a non-owner-occupied. We said, "A short-term home rental means any dwelling that is rented in its entirety for less than 30 consecutive days by persons other than the owner from which the owner receives monetary compensation, and the owner is not present and personally living on the premise during the time of the rental." Now, the only item that I would, that I, based upon my comments earlier, I wanted to, again, discuss whether we wanted to keep owner-occupied distinct from other short-term rentals. Because if we do, this definition works. If we're going to group up together, this definition doesn't work. We have to amend it. Mr. Marzullo, what are you thinking? Because I know you've had some thoughts on this topic.
Now, are you saying that we need to address it? We might need to adjust it for bed and breakfast? Is that what you're saying, or?
So this definition, which was-
Would be Airbnb, VRBO, that kind of stuff.
It would not cover owner-occupied, which would be basically bed and breakfast.
Correct.
And part of why we did that is because of the possibility then that we could place short-term rentals in districts that are distinct from bed and breakfasts. If we have a single definition for all short-term rentals, then basically we always have to maintain the same group moving forward. So if we allow, if we want Airbnb-type to be in the residential district, then we would also have to allow bed and breakfast because they fall within the same definition. bed and breakfast, because they fall within the same definition. We separate the definitions. We can put them in different districts. We can have one be a conditional use, one be a permitted use, et cetera.
So what ultimately is your question on that one? Yes, there's
Do we want to keep them separate, or do we want to merge them together and just have a short-term rental definition that covers both?
If we want to define more opportunities, then I think we need to have a separate definition. But I'm also concerned with a more verbose regulation becoming more complicated for folks to navigate. Now, it won't necessarily further complicate things by having a owner-occupied short-term rental. But what I am concerned about is folks basically renting out a room in their house and not doing it as basically becoming a transient home, if you will.
Which of these definitions would that fall under today? Or neither?
We don't currently have a definition that allows for anything like this.
In terms of, you had short-term rental bifurcated into owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied. Owner-occupied representing something like a bed and breakfast, non-owner-occupied representing something like an Airbnb. And then I heard almost like it's like a third type, right? Where it's owner-occupied, but I'm renting out a room.
So that's a bed and breakfast, though. As long as it's under 30 days.
If it's more than 30, would it, would it exceed? It's a whole different category.
Well, then that's something that
It's not a short-term rental.
It's not a short-term rental and truthfully isn't allowed for in the resolution because it's a single-family home.
Multi-family. Mr. Manley, do you have any thoughts?
No, no, I'm still, we're still wrestling back with definitions because now, you know, we know, we apparently find a short-term rental as being 30 days or less. Therefore, I presume a long-term rental would be more than 30 days without any regard to bed and breakfast or Airbnb or whatever, but just looking at the terms of rental, is that, would that be the way we're headed? Are people thinking short-term is 30 days or less? Anything else is longer than 30 days? And is there going to be an upper limit on that? Or just left it at excess of 30 days?
Ultimately, I think it would just make sense to leave it in excess of 30 days.
Is that, I have no problem, but again.
If someone signs a lease for a year or two years in someone's home, then it is what it is.
What's going on now, even though we may not be aware of?
I think effectively what, you know, by having a short-term rental, basically what you're going to effectively create is a period that allows for a multifamily as long as it's under 30 days. And the reason I'm saying that is because, you know, a short-term rental, it could be rented by multiple couples that are staying in the house for the same, for the period of time. If it's an Airbnb, you could have multiple rooms with different families in it at the same time. So basically, what we're going to do is create a definition that allows for multifamily, potentially within a residential district if we allow for, you know, short terms, either as a conditional use or as an approved, as a permitted use. And then beyond 30 days, it becomes a long-term rental, and therefore it can only be single-family at that point because it would just fall within our regular regulations.
So owner-occupied longer than 30 days wouldn't even be an option. Because then that becomes multifamily.
Multifamily.
And that would be true under our current regulations.
So now we've taken the long-term and we have either an owner-occupied or non-owner-occupied, is that?
I think we're trying to combine it.
I didn't follow what
Okay, if I, if I look at long-term as being more than 30 days, now we're addressing the location, the house, whatever, whatever it called, can either be owner-occupied under one set of rules or non-owner-occupied under another set of rules, is that?
For short-term, not for long-term. I don't think, at least as of now, I don't know if we're trying to develop any definitions for long-term.
Okay, so, okay, so I can set that one.
Just short-term rentals.
Okay, so now we, okay, now we talk about short-term. And again, we're dividing it into owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied, correct?
Well
For discussion.
For discussion, yes. And so, and that's what Peninsula did. And so Peninsula, and their definitions are very similar, quite frankly. Let's see. The definition of an owner-occupied short-term rental is a rental for less than 30 consecutive days in which the owner is concurrently personally occupying the premises with the renter. One or more renters may occupy a single room or multi-rooms in the main dwelling or an accessory building, provided the accessory building has separate bathroom facilities and meet health care, health and safety standards. Basically, the definition part of that is a rental of less than 30 days in which the owner is concurrently personally occupying the premise with the renter. The short-term home rental is, short-term home rental means any dwelling that is rented in its entirety for less than 30 consecutive days by persons other than the owner, from which the owner receives monetary compensation and the owner is not personally present and personally living on the premise during the time of the rental.
Okay.
So, but what is the difference if it's rented out to multiple families to come and stay? What difference is that to having the homeowner there?
And that's
That's why I'm saying why we could just combine it into one definition, because theoretically, a lot of these places, multiple families go for the Airbnb. You know, it's not just one family. Run it for two families to go, for family reunion, or whatever it might be.
I agree with you. I think that the
But when you say owner-occupied, aren't you opening the door for the owner providing breakfast or meals or some other things such as bed and breakfast? You can call it something else, if you will, owner-occupied that happens to provide breakfast.
It's a short-term rental.
Yeah.
It fits the short-term rental definition.
Okay.
Whether it's, whether you're doing it to be, you know
So you, but you're not going to be, then you in turn probably wouldn't want to put that in the residential areas. And how many places do we have that are in industrial parkway where there's a home? There could be one.
And I think that that's where I was trying to go. What I was saying earlier is, why wouldn't you want a bed and breakfast on a 20, 30-acre parcel of land?
Will it be limited by the size of the lawn?
I don't know that it would, but if you, if you had that choice
Those are good questions.
A owner-occupied four-bedroom home or an Airbnb four-bedroom home next door to you, I would think that I would prefer an owner-occupied four-bedroom rental next to me, because the owner's present, they're going to make sure that the house is being maintained, that their residents aren't too loud, versus a non-owner-occupied. So, you know, I don't know if, if putting a bed and breakfast in a residential district is worse than putting any other short-term rental in a residential district. I think that you, we have to look, you know, going, after we get the definitions developed, I think we have to look into, okay, do we want to somehow control the size of the rentals based upon other factors? You know, whether it's, I don't know what we can do, if we can do number of bedrooms, if we can do some sort of, you know, if we move it into conditional uses and that there's some guidance that we can provide that way to limit the size of the rental. But the dichotomy between owner-occupied or non-owner-occupied, I don't know if it's a good separation.
On the surface, I mean, you know, what you're saying, I think, resonates with me a little bit. You know, on the surface, if I had a choice of, you know, an owner-occupied versus a non-owner-occupied, I'd pick the owner-occupied every time, right? That person's got skin in the game. It's not just a, it's not just an asset, a source of revenue. It's, you know, a little bit more than that. I don't want to be a naysayer on the whole thing. I'm, you know, just trying to get in on this one. This came up years ago. There's a fundamental question, I think, that gets asked, and I know it was asked back in October, I think it was. It's, it's all fine and dandy, and I think we absolutely should have definitions. That's a great place to start. But once you get into writing language, let's start talking enforcement of it. Right? It's one thing to write a regulation. It's another thing to have the people, have the right people, you know, be able to enforce it. I think a number of years ago, the trustees had an ambitious goal of putting the moiseraunis in place. They went so far as to pass it. I don't believe that it existed in much more than a couple of months or a year or something like that. You couldn't, you can't enforce it. So I'm just concerned if, you know, we invest too much time here on something that can't be enforced, then what's the point? Certainly, again, having the definitions, I think, is, you know, just from using the book as a tool for those coming into the community. For those, just asking a simple question, gee, I'd like to have a short-term rental. I wonder if there's anything in the resolution about short-term rental. There's the definition. At least they defined what it is, but beyond that, I think we just have to exercise a little bit of caution.
I think you raise a good point. You know, the for better or worse, you know, most of our zoning resolution is complaint-driven. And so I think that sometimes it's good to have items in the book that enable the township to work with someone to achieve some sort of resolution. And so what I think sometimes happens unfortunately is, you know, someone will complain and then the result is, there's nothing we can do about it because there's nothing that's being violated. And so if we have something in the book that enables them to go in and work through it, you know, if a person rents their house out one day a year or one time a year for three days, the odds are that we're not going to be able to enforce that. But if someone turns their home into a bed and breakfast and they're routinely having, you know, people come through, well, now we can start to work with them and trying to clarify that. And if we have to take action, is that we have grounds to do that, whereas right now we might not have grounds to do that. And so, you know, I think that there's a value add to at least putting it in the book so that the township has the ability to enforce it.
It sounds like, I mean, it sounds like you guys have done a lot of research around this. You know, you referenced a definition from Peninsula. Peninsula being a municipality maybe is a little bit different. I'm just curious, like other surrounding townships, do they have, you know, similar type of language? And how do they, like, how would they enforce it? I think, I think there's a bed and breakfast over in Sagamore Hills Township. And as you're talking, I'm curious how they enforce, you know, and enforce the operation there.
I can't find my chart, but I did it all in a spreadsheet. I went through all of the townships in Medina County and looked up what their zoning is for short-term rentals.
And did a lot of
And I found Peninsula because I, Peninsula is located near the Cuyahoga Valley National Park.
Yeah.
So we're located near the metro park. So that's why when I looked at Peninsula's definition. I can't find it.
I've got it somewhere. So there are a fair number of townships, actually, even within Medina County, that have some sort of definition.
Definition and language or just definition or combination?
Yeah, combination and location where you can have it, where you cannot have it. The definitions, you know, I went and found not only the short-term rentals, but then I looked at the group homes or multi-unit settings. So just to give us a foundation on what other townships and what other areas of Medina County, you know, what they're doing.
Yeah.
Didn't do all of Summit County. I just looked at Peninsula.
Yeah, no, and it makes sense, right? But we keep circling back to the enforcement piece and
That's
It's important, but it can't restrict us from actually defining these things. Just the same way we have verbiage about not having home-based businesses in the residential district. We know they exist. We know they do. No one's going out and enforcing it
Right.
until there's a complaint.
Right.
At which point we can go out and say, hey, you know what? Yeah, this person is disrupting your lifestyle. We're going to do something about it. And to just say, well, there's nothing we can do about it, that's, I think that's a bit short-sighted, because there are plenty of times that, hey, you know what? We didn't think about this eventuality of where this could potentially become an issue. And like, I'm thinking about the folks up in the old Skyland development that someone just says, hey, you know what? I'm a snowbird. I'm going to go down to Naples for the next six months and I can't afford both homes, so every single weekend I get someone else living there.
I would assume HOA would prevent something like that.
Well, and as is brought up many, 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 many times, HOAs go defunct.
Sure.
HOAs only have as much teeth as they can have. And frankly, I think the majority of the time, before anything would even be able to be monitored or intervene by an HOA, then the owner could just stop running it out for a little bit. It becomes a moot point. It goes away and then they started again.
Sure. And we have many, you know, three-quarter acre properties here in Hinckley that are not HOA properties. I mean, some of the properties built in the 50s, 60s, they don't have HOAs, but they deserve the same protections potentially as, oh, absolutely, the developments, so. So can I get a general consensus on, do we like two definitions, one definition? Where are we on that point? In terms of owner-occupied, non-owner-occupied versus a single definition? And again, this is, we're going to have to start looking into the future as to whether, you know, we think that it's going to potentially make sense to allow either as a conditional use or as an approved use, different items, owner-occupied versus non-owner-occupied in residential business districts, et cetera, or if we can group them all together and use, have the same regulations applied to both.
I mean, having two definitions gives us a finer level of granularity, and it does distinguish two different uses, in my opinion. If we're going to define it, I personally, I would define it in good paths, yeah.
By defining them separately, if we decide that we want to put verbiage in associated with it, then that gives us the ability to provide different levels of latitude based on different definitions.
I agree. So now, all of my notes, I've misplaced my draft of the minutes from the last meeting. Do you have your hand? So at least for now, let's go return back to the definition that we had on December 2nd for short-term rentals and try to at least lock down this language so that we can move forward with short-term, I guess. And then we'll do the same with owner-occupied. And then at that point, I'd like to have, you know, maybe discontinue the old discussion business, understand maybe discontinue the old discussion business, understand what, you know, what this, this group wants to see moving forward. And then we'll have open up to public comment and try to be out of here. Does that make sense?
Sure.
So the working definition for short, short term rental is, is any dwelling that is rented in its entirety for less than 30 consecutive days, days by persons other than the owner, from which the owner receives monetary compensation and the owner is not present and personally living on the premise during the time of the rental. I don't see any need to amend that based upon tonight's discussion.
I like the definition. I think it's fine.
Okay. Now for the owner occupied, I think we can have a very similar definition, actually. I think we just can say a, a owner occupied short term home rental means any dwelling that is rented while the owner is concurrently personally occupying the premise for less than 30 consecutive days by person. I can't write and do this at the same time there. Let's choose a sentence next.
So maybe, maybe instead of less than, no longer than for both of them? Um, no. Maybe for both of them, but definitely for the owner occupied.
What, why are you trying to draw that distinction there?
Because no longer than means, once you go over that 30 days, you're no longer in a short term rental status. And now you are, that's a, that's a long term rental to a second family, which is not permitted currently. Maybe it's not an important distinction. I don't know.
I'm not following, but, but I knew you're, there's something important you're saying here. That no, less than versus no longer than, when you go back like you. On the surface, to me, it, it means the same thing. I hope that you were. I think there's something I'm missing with that.
All right. So I, I have a definition and then we can work on, I, I, I don't know. More than 30 consecutive days just also means that they get the 30th day in there. The other one said less than 30 consecutive days, which means 29.
29.
Yeah. So I think we can do either one. I, I do think that we probably should maintain consistency just because in, in my mind it makes sense. So here would be a proposed definition for an owner occupied. A short term home rental, short term owner occupied home rental means any dwelling that is rented for no more than 30 consecutive days by persons other than the owner, while the owner is concurrently personally occupying the premise and from which the owner receives monetary compensation.
Let me just ask, so you're separating it because of owner occupied, correct? And the reason owner occupied means there's two, two families.
I think under either one of these.
But in the other one, you can have two families in, then. So that's why I don't like separation.
The only reason I like separation is because maybe as we go through this, we might find that maybe bed and breakfast are conditionally approved in this district and maybe short term rentals aren't conditionally approved in this district, but they're approved in this district. Or maybe we say owner occupied, you can have up to five or six rooms. Maybe non owner occupied, you can only have three rooms. So we're just creating a dichotomy, you know, we're, we're allowing us to then create rules underneath of it that don't.
Limitations to each. Okay. Okay. I was still stuck on that. Sorry.
Yeah. That was one of the discussions that we had last time. So I understand why you were stuck on that. And then as I got to thinking, like both of them have family. So I think. Anything else on those definitions?
Could you read your definition again?
Sure. Short term owner occupied home rental means any dwelling that is rented for no more than 30 consecutive days by persons other than the owner, while the owner is concurrently personally occupying the premise and from which the owner receives monetary compensation. It's very similar to the other definition. It just allows the owner to be present. Mr. Manley, you're thinking, you have a thought.
In October, I wrote this. Short term rentals, no more than 30 days. Owner occupied, non owner occupied. But we made a little more progress. I got a few more words. So I, I guess we're making good progress. But I, no, I have no comments. I, I think occupied and non occupied should be separated for the very reason you mentioned. It's a little easier to modify a small section than a larger section.
So now that we have definitions in place, I guess now the question becomes, what do we want it to, moving forward with short term? Do we want to do anything further with short term prior to the, the review of the comprehensive plan? Do we want to start working on substantive?
Well, might I suggest we, we come to a conclusion of maybe our next meeting, what, where the, which districts these could be done in. And because this will never be completely ready for the trustees before the comprehensive plan is. And maybe there's something that might come up at that point, but we haven't done.
And, and that's where I'm struggling with, you know, we can, we can do that and start, you know, putting these into districts. But we don't have the new plan that, that's going to hopefully tell us the intent of what residents want to see in each one of those districts. So we can work off of the old intent.
That kind of goes off of what I was bringing up in the last meeting where instead of trying to figure out which, which districts to either allow or disallow. And then again, that's why I want to start with just the definition. I think it would be worthwhile to come up with, all right, are these things currently in the township? If they are, as a township, we're relatively unaware of them. What I think we ought to do is come up with something that allows us to have on record what is a short term rental and when it's actually occupied. Again, because it goes back to our safety forces that they know, especially police and fire, obviously those are safety forces. But when they're, when they're driving around the town and they see a home that is vacant, they know it's vacant. But then when they see that, oh, someone's there this weekend, well, that's odd. I, I think they would like to at least have a heads up that owner's not in town, but it is occupied by someone else legally. And, and that's where, that's what I brought up in the last meeting is I would like to see a form filled out when it's rented and submitted to the, to the administrative offices so that then we can get that information out to the safety forces.
So if I'm hearing both of you, it sounds like you're, you, you would like us to at least start with the substantive.
Well, a little more than just a definition, maybe, just.
Okay. That's what I, I didn't know if we want to lock in our definitions or if we want to start working on substantive.
Because I, I understand what you're saying. I agree. But I'd like to put the onus on the homeowner. The police station has these forms you can fill out when you go on vacation and I'm sure they would provide something similar to have the homeowner fill out in that situation and turn it into the police station. So we're not creating a, a potential enforcement issue somewhere.
So why don't I, for the next meeting, before the next meeting, I'll try to reach out to the police chief and the fire chief and understand what type of information they might want. I don't want to put too much onerous on them if they don't think that they need that, that level of onerous. Maybe they just want to know which homes are generally short term rentals and which ones aren't, and then flag it that way. Maybe they would like a notification every single time that someone takes over a short term residence. So I'll reach out to them, you know, before the next meeting and hopefully get some guidance from them as to what they would like to see. And then we can start putting together substantive bits of the resolution that we can then.
And hopefully the minutes will get, I, my shorthand is not readable, so I have to write it longhand.
Mine is all over the page.
You mean like this?
Yes.
So hopefully it's, your language presented is in the minutes of it, you know, that we can pick it up.
Are you, are you saying we should also look at where we would like these placed? Or will we wait for the comprehensive plan to be done? Cause I'm not sure that if the way our township is now identified, business residential, will it look the same or will that change?
Well, the, we, we certainly won't see a new district created as a result, or at least initially as a result of this, you know, this amendment. Now, it, it might start the process of going through and adding a new district, but that could be years. I mean, I don't even know how long it took.
No, I, I know. But I mean, I know when I've looked at other townships, they have different categories, much different than how our, our zoning is set up. So that's why I'm saying, do we wait for the comprehensive plan to be done to find out what the community has wanted? And, and how the districts will look, what they'll look like? Or do we move forward?
What's the timing on the comprehensive plan?
April, I heard.
I heard end of April is, I, I don't know if that's the final submission or if that's when the, the process wraps up.
I don't, according to what I read, the.
You have to please, please state your name and address.
The writer of 218 Wall original. The comprehensive plan will be concluded when it's concluded. The contract with the advisor ends on April 29th.
So we'll have some working product by then. And then the question is, how long will it take the township after that to, to move forward with their decision? But I, I do think, you know, part of what takes so long is just the development of language. And so if we start to develop language, I think it's relatively easy to move it, you know, into, to, to say, okay, we're going to apply it to a business district or to a residential district. If we're starting to work on the substantive resolution. And again, from Mr. Manley and Mr. Marzullo, it sounds to me like we want to start seeing at least some teeth that go behind the definitions. So we'll work on that next time. Very quickly, because I really like to not extend the time here. Now that we have the full commission seated, I would like to know, so right now we're, we're working on these definitions. Is there anything else that you would like to see done? That we should add to the list of items to, to take care of, particularly between now and when the the, the proposed amendments come through, if any.
Could you give some context on multi unit buildings? Is that commercial? Is that residential? That conversation has like in law suites and that come up?
So we, we, for the most part, I think, next, I think next, um, excuse me, in law suites. So we had that on, on the agenda for a long time and we decided not to. I think it mostly came up in the business districts. Mr. Marzullo, if you have anything else.
So I believe what we were talking about with the multi unit were, were the group homes as well as the, what was going on in specifically in the.
The senior housing, that's what.
Housing, right? What, what kind of limits were going to exist? Potentially project density based on size.
And we were looking, one of the things that we talked about is right now apartments are permitted as a, I think as a conditional use on the second floor within the B2 district. And so do we want to somehow limit the number or, or do any, you know, look at the resolution as it pertains to apartments in the B2 district?
Also on the minutes, you have my minutes, but there was a paragraph there where trustee Kalina mentioned or suggested to the board that we should look definition of lot. Did I read that correctly?
Lot versus parcel.
I, you know what? I just remember reading this and. Here it is, page two of nine. Talking about the 87 acres of the. Two of nine. It says on the bottom of the one paragraph, trustee Kalina stated his recommendation for the future would be to take a good look at the township's definition of lot. And it was with the back lot. They were that frontage, that one, one parcel.
And this initially came up as a result of this developer proposing that the one lot in Kubla Farms, which didn't meet the definition, the rear lot wasn't technically a rear lot because it abutted center road, but the driveway wasn't coming off center road. It was coming off the subdivision. And so then there was a question of, is that a rear lot or not? So I, I'd have to check back with him as to whether that's what he's referencing with that statement. And why do you like us to thought that we should take a good look, look at that definition? Or if there is another concern in addition to that, but it might just be, you know, a lot needs to be basically within a subdivision if it's part of the subdivision.
I just didn't want to get that open.
That's a good point. So anything else to, to add to the old business?
Want to ask one thing, allow, would allow me a few minutes or for the board, a few minutes at our next meeting to discuss what we think I should take to the zone, to the comprehensive plan. Anybody has any thoughts or ideas?
Are, are those going to be broadcast for people?
I have no, I, I, I don't think so, but I, I don't know for sure. All I know is it's running a little bit further behind schedule than they had anticipated.
Have they set the first meeting yet?
No, we have not. No, nothing's been scheduled. I think they're waiting to get trustees all in place and settle down for a month or two.
Okay.
For a meeting or two, I should say.
So we'll certainly allocate some time for you to do that at the next meeting.
Oh, that's, well, that, that, but just we, I might get on the agenda for a couple of minutes and next, you know, take care of it.
Anything else?
What was the, the context on the alternative energy, the screening? I think we remember meeting about that.
So as part of the text amendments that we had introduced in the back in October or so, at the public hearings, there was some discussion about screening and whether we really should have screening around the solar panels in part because the possibility of blocking sun and also why should they be burdened with screening when there were many other things within our resolution that don't require screening. And so we agreed to consider that, but we wanted to take a more holistic review of that because everything else had moved through and the, that, that item is in several different places. And the Medina Planning Services Commission had only reviewed our recommended changes to. to the screening with respect to a couple of items. So we decided to table that and look at it again as we moved through our next round of text amendments where we could then look at amending or striking through that language in all portions of the resolution as it pertains to that. Anything else? All right, I'll open it up to the. Go ahead. Please step up to the podium and state your name.
Sorry, I, is this, so at the end of the meetings, we usually go through the board members' reports? Is that what you were?
Oh, we missed that, board members' reports.
Word.
We know that. So you want to do that first.
That's fine, because I don't have a, I don't have a report from chair, obviously. So if you have a, sure.
Let's see, so I've got some, I've got a few emails.
I said it because you weren't chairman any longer. I didn't have to read this.
So on December 7th, and this, I actually do have to ask, please don't shuffle papers or anything while we're going through this because it does affect the sound quality in the, in what people can hear while they're watching digitally. Received a public records request from Mr. Pearl, says, good morning, Mr. Pearl. In response to your, well, Mr. Pearl sent it to Suzanne. And she responded on the seventh, in response to your request, please find the attached emails that were read by Mr. Marzillo at the December 2nd, 2021 Zoning Commission meeting. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you, Suzanne. After that was sent, I actually engaged Mr. Pearl in an email. And I had asked him, or I responded with, good morning, Mr. Pearl. I hope you had a wonderful Thanksgiving and a great start to your holiday. I'm reaching out because the last two months you've requested hard copies of the emails I have read at the meetings. I want to check on the quality of sound for the meetings. Is my dictation clear or does it ever come across incoherent? I'd love some feedback so that I can try to make improvements on our end if any are necessary. Thanks, Matt. And Mr. Pearl, I apologize. It's just been my policy, I read, read the emails. He said, Matt, I'm viewing this email to you as my response to your personal inquiry to me of what can I do better? And completely unrelated to zoning business and as such, does not need to be read aloud at the next zoning meeting as correspondence. I hope you and Martha agree. Any sound, a vibration converted digital transmitted across the internet through servers, routers and modems, then converted back to a sound for Zoom audience loses quality, especially for his ears. I believe you are speaking clearly with good diction and are attempting to read emails in chronological order, but email chains do not lend themselves to that task. One issue with clarity is when a trustee or zoning commissioner, BZA chairman states they are about to read correspondence, all the other members take this as an opportunity to shuffle through papers on their hard surface table, adjust their chairs, et cetera, all in front of live microphones. The audience, while courteous, is more interested in the content of the meeting, less interested in the correspondence and inadvertently contributes to the background noise through the overhead microphones. The hard surfaces in the meeting room itself does not help with clarity. I guess the only way to minimize the effort, the only way to minimize the effort my request caused you is to automatically send the emails correspondences to Suzanne at the end of the, at the end of the meeting, so she can forward them to residents like me without bothering you. I so look forward to attending your meetings in person, Richard. To which we had a response from Martha that said, I absolutely agree. Uh, let's see, then. Had some emails come by from Nikki Long that came through as, good morning, Chris. I had a few questions about the zoning selection process that I was hoping you could help me with. I copied Matt on here for his visibility. So the original posting was for a zoning commission alternate position. Makes sense as Mr. Arline could no longer be an alternate. Two applications were submitted. Then I understand that Mr. Schneider passed away and the application deadline was extended to December 14th. From what I could see, the position advertised for did not change. The township still sought applications for zoning committee, zoning commission alternate position. This would make sense if Lindsay Rubel was going to move into Mr. Schneider's seat as she is the only other alternate. Then the township would have to have needed to fulfill or to fill two alternate positions. Eight applications were submitted. Instead, what seems to have happened is that the township filled Mr. Schneider's seat with Mr. Spellman and did not appoint anyone to fill the alternate seat. I understand the board of trustees made a recommendation to someone of Tom Schrader to fill Mr. Arline's empty seat. I was hoping you could explain, one, what is happening with Ms. Rubel's seat? Who and when will decide if she is reappointed? Two, why did the board of trustees fill the commission seat and not the alternate seat? Who and when will decide Mr. Arline's alternate seat? Why was Ms. Rubel not selected for Mr. Schneider's seat? As an alternate, shouldn't she have been automatically moved into that position? My understanding is the BZA alternate spots are also expiring. When will those be posted and who and when will decide those positions? Thank you, Chris, for your help, just trying to understand the process. Have a Merry Christmas, Nikki. Chris responded, hi Nikki, feel free to call me at your convenience so I can best answer your questions. My schedule is flexible this week and I'm looking forward to hearing from you, Chris. I also got a question from Tom Wilson. Good morning, Matthew. Yesterday I had a gentleman stop by the zoning office asking if you could have a truck container dropped at his business for storage in Hinkley's B two downtown district. My answer was, a container was not considered a structure in the code. However, there is nothing specifically calling out such a container in our code. Please take a look at the code and at the definition of a structure and let me know what you think. Thanks, Tom. And Bill, perhaps you recall going through that, going down that rabbit hole maybe four years ago. Someone wanted to put a.
Back in the back lot.
Well, without an actual structure and. Uh, let's see. Then received a email from Dennis Timoney, Timoney. Oh, we seem to have gone from zero to drug mart awfully fast. I'm sorry I missed the opportunity to have my voice heard at the most recent meetings, but I'll attempt to point out an area that I'm hopeful is already included in the conditional use permit. Other than the obvious traffic headaches, has anyone discussed the business parking lot light pollution issue? If it's not too late, I'd really like to see this address. In my 16 years here in Hinkley, the glow in the sky from Brunswick's never-ending expansion of auto dealerships and other developments has now made it impossible, or has made it possible on some nights to read a book at 2:00 AM in my backyard without the A W flashlight, especially with snow on the ground. It wasn't always like that. It's too late as it relates to Brunswick's light pollution, but I'd hate to see it get any worse here. Having traveled recently to both Sedona, Arizona and Williamsburg, Virginia, both communities have strict restrictions on all forms of outdoor lighting. And I have to tell you all, it is very effective. You can actually see the stars at night, yet still maintain safety and security. I don't remember the gentleman's name from zoning in Sedona, but when I spoke to him, he was very well versed in all the lighting nuances, cost and other issues. Seems like an easy ask to help set Hinkley apart from our ever urbanizing neighbors. I've attached a link below. Hopefully this finds its way into your optic nerves in the inboxes of the new trustees and the other zoning personnel. Their email addresses weren't on the Hinkley webpage.
Mr. Marzillo.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to take, entertain a motion for 15 minute extension to our meeting.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Hold on a favor.
Hi. Thank you.
You may have, thank you.
The response from trustee Augustine was, good afternoon, Mr. Timoney. The discussion, the discussion of light pollution did occur at last evening's BZA meeting with great consideration due to the senior housing that will be just west of the proposed complex. I have attached the application with renderings for your review. It seems that the stormwater retention area will be tucked behind the building and border the senior housing, which will offer a barrier that will assist in light pollution. The topic you bring up is extremely important and I'm pleased that you copied zoning chair Marzillo as his board will see this project next if the variance is approved for the pharmacy drive-through. Thank you for including Sedona's zoning text as well. It is always beneficial to look to other communities that we appreciate. Sedona is a magical location and I agree with your assessment of uninterrupted stargazing. I think the goal you request is tangible and hope that the zoning commission will consider revising our text to support it. Lastly, I would like to thank you for submitting an application to the comprehensive plan steering committee. Upon review, I found that you were one of the final 15 that I selected. I'm sorry that you did not make the committee, but I look forward to further conversation about the direction of Hinkley in the future. Merry Christmas to you and yours. All right. Then we had the back and forth regarding the zoning minutes. And that's just a matter of going through the actual drafts, approving them, and it's strictly clerical. Something else that was brought up by Melissa the other day in a phone call was sent out in an email to the entire team and we didn't bring it up tonight despite us saying that we would, was the sunshine training. And so that email is, good afternoon, happy new year. I wanted to update you all on a few items. In yesterday's trustee organizational meeting, the board decided to require sunshine law training within the first six months of your terms. Since it can be completed virtually and at your own convenience, we felt that six months was an adequate timeframe. It is my opinion that all members should completed this requirement this year so that the requirement is met for all terms. I would encourage your boards to add similar language to your organizational meetings. Your first meeting of the year is your organizational meeting. Reminder that if you attend virtually, you will not be able to interact. Therefore, I encourage you to attend in person with masks to function as a full board. The masks are suggested but not required. The trustees did not have a full board at yesterday's meeting, so the board determined that zoning board positions and trustee liaison ships would be tabled until a special trustee meeting on Tuesday, January 11th, 22. With that said, we hope to meet to establish the BZA members and alternates before the BZA meets on 112. We did finalize the zoning commission members so that you may meet tomorrow with a full board. Bill Spellman and David Manley will be sworn in tomorrow evening at the beginning of the meeting. Judy has an excused absence. Alternates have not been named for the zoning commission since alternate terms expire 123121. Your attendance is not required for the zoning commission meeting tomorrow, but always welcome. I appreciate your service to our community and look forward to working with you all again this year. Please email or call me should you have any questions. That was immediately followed by great question, another email from Melissa saying, great questions posed about the sunshine law training. Here's a link to Ohio Attorney General's website. You can register for any of the virtual options. We should be free. Please email, please email or bring in your certificate of confirmation of completion to Suzanne once requirement has been fulfilled. There was also a questions asked as to why the zoning commission was finalized as they already had a quorum. We wanted to give the full board an opportunity to meet and have a say in the organizational meeting. We intend to offer the same courtesy to the BZA, which is why the timing of our trustee's special meeting on Tuesday morning is so paramount. Further, we extended the identical courtesy to our fellow board member who cannot attend the trustee organizational meeting by tabling the more important issues for Tuesday morning's meeting. Each person brings a unique perspective that we recognize and respect. Received an email from Melissa today saying, good afternoon, zoning commission. David Manley was sworn in today by Martha Cathcart and Bill Spellman will be sworn in by Martha before the meeting this evening. The three trustees are unable to attend in person this evening. I will be setting up the virtual meeting from home and I'm confident that Matt Marzillo will be able to assist in setting up the room from Town Hall with me over the phone. I will give Hinkley Police a heads up to lock uptown hall once you're done. We're all very saddened by with the loss of Bruce Schneider. He brought a unique perspective and a wealth of knowledge to your board. The board of trustees appointed Mr. Spellman to the vacancy left by Bruce last month. We are confident that he will bring a similar similarity, unique perspective and experience to the board. Bill had served on the zoning commission for 11 years and was chair as well as vice chair. I hope that you will join me in welcoming him back to the zoning commission and look forward to the great work you will do together this year. Thank you.
Hey, Matt, one of those emails you read, you said it was sent to all of us about the sunshine laws and stuff? I didn't get it.
It was sent to all of us as well as the BZA.
What date was that, please? Let me get it. Her email from after that, 2:57 today came in.
Let me check.
Just see, maybe my name spelled wrong or something.
Here, this one.
Yeah, I didn't get this one. Is my name there? My name is on it. I did not get that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's, that's what you have for an email?
Mm-hmm. Can you forward that again to me?
Certainly. I looked and there's the four sub virtual opportunities in the next six months in order to play. I think the first one's the January 23rd and then several thereafter. It's a three hour.
Yeah, it's not terribly complicated.
Was it capped? Do they have like a attendee cap on it or no? I don't think so. I submitted my registration request and it was granted. Basically a minute later it was basically an auto accepted.
So then we had a email from Nikki Long. Good afternoon, trustees. I have the following questions, see below, that are like answered publicly prior to a vote to any appointment on the zoning commission or the BZA. These are reasonable questions and the public should know the answers to them prior to any action on your part. In addition, I recently learned that the trustee meetings are not recorded, unlike the zoning commission and the BZA meetings. I was told the reason was that it was the trustee's discretion to record or not record and that the meeting minutes serve as the official record of the meeting. What is the reason the zoning commission and BZA meetings are recorded but not the trustee meetings? Did the zoning commission and BZA elect to record their own meetings or did the trustees decide they should be recorded? I would like the trustees to discuss and vote to record all trustee meetings and furthermore create an internet space where all the township meetings, zoning commission, BZA and trustee meetings can be viewed and downloaded. Questions. What is happening with Ms. Rubel's zoning commission alternate seat? Who and when will decide if she is reappointed? Why did, why did the trustees fill the zoning commission seat and not the alternate seat? Furthermore, why did, why did the township post the alternate position but not the permanent position? Who and when will decide Mr. Arline's zoning commission alternate seat? Why was Ms. Rubel not selected for Mr. Schneider's seat? As an alternate, shouldn't she have been automatically moved into that position? My understanding is the BZA alternate spots are also expiring. When will those be posted? And who and when will decide those positions? I am sure you are aware that much discussion about Mr. Woolley's position as a BZA alternate has been made back and forth between citizens and the trustees. Citizens were repeatedly told that Mr. Woolley's appointment to the BZA position would not be renewed when it expired, yet the township has not posted for a BZA alternate position, even though his commission is either expired or very close to expire. Thank you, Nikki Long. And the response. From Melissa was, happy new year, Nikki. I apologize that I did not see this email earlier. I know that Suzanne explained to you via email on Monday, the record of the meeting is always the minutes. Do you need further explanation? An email came very shortly after, Nikki, I apologize, my response email was sent prematurely as I was navigating screens on my computer. You'll find a more complete response below. Alternates are not mandatory according to statute. Further, there is no specific number of alternates determined by statute. The new trustee board may decide to limit the number of alternates or maintain the same number. The board of trustees gives the same courtesy to expiring member positions as they do to alternates. We ask each of them to email or verbally confirm with us that they want to continue on in their current role. The only person they could not continue on in 2022 was Mr. Arline. This is why his position was the only one advertised. Alternates serve for a one-year term. Therefore, their terms expire 123121 and not until that date. Would you not ever appoint another alternate in the middle of a term? That is why the last board recommended an alternate for Mr. Arline's position and did not appoint him. Mr. Arline was already in the term. I hope that makes sense. This explanation should assist in answering number two and number three. Number four, one, four and five, all alternate terms have expired. The new board will determine all our alternate positions if they determine the positions are needed at all. You will note that the advertisement on the bottom of this email was broad in nature and did not specify position, just appointment to the zoning commission. We never have any idea as to whom will apply and did not want to limit ourselves. Therefore, a broad description affords us the ability to determine HR decisions based on applications. The zoning commission member vacancy is the priority as the alternate position is not necessary according to statute. The last board was impressed with the applicants and made the decision to choose, to chose the member and recommend the alternate. The member is necessary to. The member is necessary to continue business. We were delayed last year with township business due to the vacancy of trustee Shulze and made a decision to make the zoning commission whole in case such an occurrence happened again. This year, we had a similar issue when a full trustee board was not present for the organizational meeting. A full board is the most effective board. There is no policy or statute that states that an alternate automatically assumes the role of member with vacancy. Again, the last board of trustees did not have knowledge as to whom would apply for the zoning commission. I encourage you to read the meeting minutes from 12/21/21 as to why Mr. Spellman was chosen for member once they were, they are approved. It was one of the easiest decisions we made all year. Should you have any further questions, please feel free to contact me. Zoning is much more complex than many know. I appreciate the opportunity to share our knowledge." That was immediately followed by Nikki's response, which was, "Melissa, thank you for your explanation. The posting was for the alternate zoning position. See the screenshot below and the PDF attachment of the top posting. So I do believe you were limited in what position you could fill with the application, applicants for that posting. I'm sure that if you would have specifically posted for a zoning commission seat, then you would have received more applications. In addition, despite being very outspoken about township matters on social media, you did nothing to advertise the position there where you have a very large audience of Hinkley residents. I understand you are not obligated to post the position on social media. The township only stands to benefit from a diverse pool of applicants. When things like this happen, i.e. you post for one position and then hire for another you did not post for, it degrades citizen trust and you end up with a community that does not actively participate in its government because they feel their participation will not matter. I think that the posting, application and interview process for the specific appointment of Mr. Spellman should be reviewed in its entirety by the trustees to ensure that it was conducted in compliance with the township policies and the Ohio revised code. Thank you, Nikki Long." And that is everything that came in for the month. That's all I got. Thank you.
Certainly.
Anyone else have any comments before we proceed?
Quick comment, the, Tom Wilson's comment on the truck-
Container?
Yeah, container.
I don't, I don't recall, may fall under outdoor storage for something like that. Something worth noting.
Yeah.
I don't remember exactly. Did you respond?
No, I intended to speak with him this evening, but he's not here, unfortunately.
Mr. Larson?
Do you want to extend it?
Yeah, let's, let's, we'll just take another motion to extend by 15 minutes.
Moved.
I will be brief.
Moved by Marzullo.
Second.
Seconded by Spellman. All in favor?
Aye.
All unanimous? Go ahead, Mr. Larson. Sorry, we just wanted to-
Jim Larson, 20 Carrow, Hinkley. Many of the items that Mr. Marzullo covered, I wrote and then some to the three trustees and I put it in there available to come up with plausible answers and reasons why they did what they did. It's my opinion that speed with which Mr. Schneider's position was filled was frankly unseemly. I mean, it was filled with lightning-like speed and there was no reason for it. You had a fully qualified alternate, ready, willing and able to assume those duties. Why couldn't it have gone through the normal and customary process like all the others do and be filled in that way? If he's so outstanding, he would still be outstanding after the first of the year as opposed to during the remainder of December when the kind two non-returning trustees and a trustee with a point of view that I'm not sure I understand ramrotted his, his nomination through and here he sits, sworn in. I just hope that the two new trustees do a deep dive on every aspect of how he came to be appointed and the circumstances of everything involved in, and if warranted, they asked for him to be removed and reappointed if he passed the muster with all three of the current trustees. Now, last item, and I'm going to be as generous as I know how to be, Mr. Manley, owing to your amount of service. You clearly misspoke when you said, while everybody was talking about the conflicts of interest and bad feelings that are going on around here, you said that trustee Ashwell sought out the zoning commission position to oversee this body. That is absolutely not true. She never wanted anything to do with oversight of this body. I confirmed that in another email just as I was sitting here, listening to all this.
I had different information.
You said?
I have different information.
Well, I can guess what that information came from and it wasn't from her. It might have been from someone else who has a different agenda, but that is absolutely positively false and it was really unfair of you to bring that up as a reason for imputing Mr. Marzullo by saying that he may be subject to influences outside of the normal business practices.
I never said he was. I said there was-
You implied it.
I didn't say there was.
Trust me, read back the, or listen, better, listen to the recording and hear the fog that was created by both of you. I mean, it's, Mr. Stone wasn't here an hour before he was trying to figure out how we can limit the amount of public dialogue and public discourse that we've previously been able to have here. I mean, this is, this is, and the only thing that's good about this meeting tonight, frankly, is that you two took over his spot, not these two. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Lindsey Rubel, 925 Stony Hill Road in Hinkley. I will be very brief. Just briefly, I wanted to thank Mr. Marzullo for his year of being chair. You did a great job and you taught me a lot, so I really appreciate that. Just very quickly on the short-term rental issue, I know we're, we're kind of like way past that now, speaking of when we should discuss topics. So I apologize if this is untimely. But my concern, I'm sorry, my concern is just that if we, if, if the zoning commission decides to have two different definitions, one being an owner-occupied short-term rental and the other being a non-owner-occupied short-term rental, we're almost presupposing that we're going to allow those, those two different, different definitions in different zoning districts, I feel like. And, and the only reason I'm bringing that up, and I, I'll be happy to send this to, to Mr. Fisher, specifically, this is for Coventry Township, which is the Portage Lakes area, but they actually have a single definition for the short, short-term rental and, and within that definition, they're assuming that the owners are not going to be occupying the property. It's going to be another, another tenant for, for less than 30 consecutive days. And this includes, there has to be a conditional use permit that is issued for a single year. So every returning owner who wants to use this as a short-term rental has to get conditional approval from the BZA. And also, they have to rent, when they do these short-term rentals, they have to provide an application to the township within 24 hours prior to the rental, stating the contact information for the property manager. There has to be some sort of caretaker who's going to be available to do this sort of thing. And also, there's a two heartbeat per bedroom rule. So that means if you do have a situation where you have a four-bedroom house, you can have eight people in there. You can't have 25 people in there. So I, I realize that's getting beyond the definitions, but the definitions might kind of frame where we're going, which I realize might not be determined until the comprehensive plan is done, but I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Briefly as well.
Mr. Burns.
Yeah. Jim Burns, 216 Lake Crest Boulevard. Thank you, board, for being here. I know your jobs are difficult and challenging having sat on that side of the aisle as a trustee. I want to give you some advice if you would take a place. Try not to expand government. Every chapter, every subsection you put in this book expands our government. I've always been for smaller government. So tread lightly with this policy of short-term rentals. I found some holes in your language. Who's the owner when the new condo house is owned by a corporation, a real estate agent or a, a trust? You might change it to 28 days. February is a 28-day month. Reason being, I have rentals, after one year, it goes to month-to-month penalty. After one year, that February comes along and it's 28 days. I'm in violation. And more importantly, and I will conclude with this, regulation is very important. There's so many regulations we have that we don't regulate, that we don't enforce and it's a problem. It's a problem that, I don't know, maybe Lindsey could speak this, is challenge in court. You can't be biased about, against this person. You have a home office, we're going to shut you down. If there's 40 other home offices we've done nothing about, there has to be regulations you can enforce and this is one that's going to be really hard to enforce. So keep that in mind as you go through this process and try to keep our government from growing any bigger than it already is. Thank you.
Anyone else? Perfect. If there are no other comments here, I'll go ahead and conclude the meeting at 9:24. Make a motion to-
Oh, adjourn the meeting.
Motion. Motion made by Marzullo.
Second.
Seconded by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned at 9:24.